Oh, you got it? Okay.
Okay, everybody ready? Jason, let me know. The regular meeting of Ucires City Council for February the 20th, 2018 is called to order. Please be in and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pro po please.
McKeever.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Lightball.
Here.
Truca.
Here.
Sad.
Here.
Foe.
Here.
Shaw.
Here.
Okay, this is where we accept the minutes from the February 6th, 2018 regular meeting. I need a motion to accept these minutes.
So.
Second. Motion by Mr. Foe, second by Mr. McKeever to accept the regular meeting, February the 6th, 2018 minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. This is where we grant permission for visitors to speak. Our first visitor this evening is going to be here, Jeff Reese. He has the state of the city report, and he kept it brief.
You want me to read extra fast?
No, I don't want you to read extra fast.
For the visitors who are here, I'll try to read it fairly quickly. It's a time that we look back every year to see what 2017 brought to the city and look a little bit ahead for next year too, so. Thank you, Madam President. Once again, it's a privilege to be here. I think this is my fourth moment, I believe. Last year, I began this address by stating that I thought the city was at a unique time in history, in our history. And we take this moment to look back on 2017. We had a lot of accomplishments last year, and I think those accomplishments will lay a strong foundation for the future of Ucires. I hope you agree with me that the opening of the state-of-the-art water treatment plant, the beginning of our long-awaited stormwater separation program, and the opening of Shine's Art Park were milestones in the history of Ucires, and they did it as long into the future. It was on a beautiful day in September, maybe some of you were there. I know many of you were. We christened our new water plant Auto Beach Grove Road, complete with cheerleaders, a marching band, ice cream stand. Lots of people were there. We had hundreds, and we had over 400 people, I believe, took the tours. They were led by our staff. It was a day of great pride for the community. And little facts about our new water treatment plant. It's going to provide about a million gallons a day to the residents of the city. We have the capacity to make, to produce up to three million gallons a day, and it ranks us in the top 10% of the state for water capacity. As we mentioned tonight earlier, for those of you who were here for our service committee or finance committee, expansion of our customer base is our goal. And we hope to set up new customers outside the city if City Council will allow us to do so. I want to thank you again for allowing us to do so out of committee and ask for your vote again during the meeting tonight. We've met with Chairman Truca at Service Committee several times, and we presented a plan that will increase our water, our base, our customer base by nearly 20% over the next decade. And what that does is allows us to increase our revenue and reduce the burden of paying back the plant, which falls on this generation. And that's the whole idea. So we can spread the burden out amongst us, and we bring new revenue at the same time. Everybody's going to be happy. At the same time, we're producing a fantastic product. In 2015, we signed a consent order with the federal EPA, and that allows us to complete or comply with mandates to separate our sanitary sewer from our stormwater sewers with a goal of reducing the amount of overflow by 80%. We were able to negotiate a favorable agreement with the federal EPA that allows us to spread the project over decades instead of being, having it done in just a few years, which is what the original plan was, and that would have been tremendous burden on our citizens. This project began in 2017. It was Phase 1, and that was the Southern Avenue phase. So for those who live in the South Side, we apologize for the bumpiness of Southern Avenue. And we expect the final asphalt coat to be laid sometime this spring. A little farther out on Southern Avenue, East Southern Avenue was the site of another tremendous accomplishment. With the assistance of the county commissioners, we were able to alleviate the flooding in the Robin Hood Heights subdivision area with the use of a detention pump that we affectionately call Lake White. If you've been out there during the recent rains, and you've seen that it's doing its job, and we've been able to keep water out of people's living rooms, which, anytime we can do that, it's a success, and it is a success. Since I took office in 2014, I have been a proponent of improving the quality of life in Ucires. We bring it up quite often. I'm very proud of our improvements to the city in 2017. And a very nice slide to Almelo Park Pool, got a lot of use and excitement, rave reviews. And we also applied for, received a grant from ODNR for a short stretch of bike slash walking paths off West Southern Avenue to Friendship Bridge. It's a small but symbolic grant that puts us on the path to more grants in the future with the end goal of having our city become more bike slash walking friendly. Sadly, the Finance Committee voted against accepting the grant, and I am asking the City Council to reconsider that decision and appropriate the funds in order to accept the ODNR grant so we can complete this project for 2018. Quality life improvement also means managing our urban forest. I have proposed a plan to improve the condition of our urban forest, which has been neglected for decades. Judging by the condition and the size of our trees, it appears that we had aggressive planning in the city 50 to 75 years ago and little management of those trees that were planted since then, and we're now in danger of losing most of our tree canopy in the city within a generation. We have to act now. We have many trees that are diseased or have diseased limbs and pose a danger to cars and pedestrians, and we have over 200 trees that have been cut down and stuff's left in street lawns and in our parks, 200. This is an embarrassment to our community. Developing a tree program is a very small part of our budget, but one that pays large returns with reduced energy costs, reduced flow through our wastewater treatment plant, and of course, add the beauty to our community. City Council approved a tree program for fiscal year 2018, but, excuse me, 2017, but sadly, the 2017 Finance Committee voted to remove the tree budget for 2018, and we are out of funds. We do not have the funds to mitigate the danger to our citizens or to plant new trees or to remove stuffs. So I'm asking you also to reconsider that decision and replace the funds to our tree budget so we can improve the safety and beauty of our community. It's a very small step, a very small hump with a tremendous return. Let's get working on it. No one wants to be around here 20 years with no trees in this community. Think about it. In December of 2017, I am happy to announce that the City of Ucires was awarded Tree City USA status for the first time ever, and we will accept this award on behalf of the citizens of Ucires from the Ohio Department of Natural Resources at a ceremony in April. Tree City USA is a free award. It costs nothing. It's given to a community that has a plan to manage trees in the community along with a small tree fund that allows for planting, pruning, and removal of diseased or dead trees. I am asking that you support this low-cost, high-return effort to improve the safety and beauty of Ucires. John Rostash and I have just finished Ohio Department of Natural Resources Tree Academy, and the knowledge that we have gained will help us to improve the quality of life in Ucires. 2017 saw the 50th anniversary of the Browners Festival. Wasn't it a lot of fun? It was great, wasn't it? The weather was fantastic. It was the best festival I can ever remember, and I've been to, I think, every one of them. Had huge crowds, everything worked out perfectly. The festival is synonymous with Ucires, and I'm proud that City Council is partnering with the festival to make it even, even better. The festival board is young and energetic, full of ideas, and committed to making the festival the best of the state. Expect big things from the Browners Festival in the future. Now's a good time to, we look ahead here to an important milestone in the history of Ucires. 2021, it's just three years away, we celebrate our bicentennial, 200 years. We need to begin planning for the celebration soon. Just three years away, and hopefully we'll be reaching out to some people to get some ideas, maybe form a board. I'll get back with you with the plan and keep you abreast of what we're planning to do here. Let's talk about Shine's Art Park. That's going to be a part of that celebration, and it'll be part of downtown Ucires for many, many years to come. Now, we still have a stage to put there on the east end. We have a design that we're looking at, and maybe have some other designs as we go forward. We have reached out to the state at this time, and hopefully we might, if we're fortunate, be able to get it in the next budget, state budget, and fund it as they did the park itself and the demolition of the theater. I'll keep you posted on it. In the meantime, the park will be, you have a temporary stage in there, and the park was going to get a lot of use. So I was looking at it today, and it looks, it was weathered to winter very well, tough winter, but it looks really good. The condition of the downtown, as you know, downtown business district plays a huge role in the attitudes and feelings of citizens towards the community. You don't have to drive too far to see some downtowns look pretty bad, and the exception is the city of Ucires. It's just got a fine-looking downtown. The merchants take care of the buildings and all. We've just got a few issues here and there. The Street Department does a great job of keeping it clean. And with the addition of that art park, that just is a gem. And this downtown, we have more plans for in the future. I know Mr. Radcliffe is planning a summer movie series, and he showed some movies last year, that's fault, and they were well-attended. Let's just, let's keep the downtown in our thoughts that we need to make this, keep it looking good. Turning to fiscal responsibility, our administration looks at every department's budget to see what tax revenue can be saved. Over the years, and Mr. Schiffer will attest to this, we've lost money from state sources as well as estate tax, HB 5 kicked in, you know, so we've lost, we've lost some revenue that we sorely needed. So what we've done, we've looked at many creative ways to offset the drop in revenue, and I'm happy to report that we are saving the city taxpayers over $250,000 per year by making changes to health insurance plan, still offering a top-notch health insurance plan to our employees, made a couple tweaks here and there, and we also eliminated some supervisory positions, combining some departments. That's a substantial savings. What they've allowed us to do, these savings, they've allowed us to spend some of that savings in a property maintenance department, and I think you all agree it's made a huge dent having somebody out there making sure that properties are kept in good shape. Rest assured, taxpayers, that we are watching every expense to ensure that your tax dollars are not wasted and invested wisely in the services that make us better. Looking ahead for 2018, which we're almost to the start of the third month, going quickly. The long-awaited Plymouth Street reconstruction project will be starting soon. It's out to bid, and I believe that bids are going to be opened very, very quickly. So that means the state's going to be starting very soon. We're going to have a meeting, however, if you live in the, in the Plymouth Street North or South area, expect a letter from us pretty quickly. We're going to have a meeting in March and discuss the procedures that we're going to have, how long it's going to take, and answer any questions you might have. Going to have new sidewalks, new curbs, and we're going to begin some stormwater separation, which will give us some additional credit with the EPA, and should be completed by the end of 2018. It's going to take a lot of patience. I know I live at the end of Plymouth Street, so there's not too many places that you can, you know, get quickly on Plymouth Street. So have some patience, it'll be, you'll love it when we get finished. We also received from the state, very fortunate to receive what's called a Small Cities Grant. Ucires is a city under 25,000, and there's money available every year. Our engineer, Brandstetter, Carol, applied for a Small Cities Grant, and we received it. And what that's going to allow us to do is take the north corridor of Sandusky Avenue from Perry Street or River Street, we're not quite sure yet where it's going to start, and we're going to go north, and that's going to be, that's going to be repaid with the addition of a bike lane that's going to go all the way out to Crossroads, Ohio Crossroads Industrial Park. So that's going to be in fiscal year 2019, so it may start yet later this year, we're not 100% sure. Fiscal year 2019 for the state actually starts in July of this year. We will keep you posted on that. We have been working with ODOT for a couple of years with about the possibility of combining our city offices, not offices, but our work areas, our water garage, our streets garage into one facility, and we have been discussing the possibility of receiving that property at a very favorable lease to us, rehabilitating the facility, and combining all our services under one facility, which will help us be more efficient and also help take care of our potential ice sore in the north side of town. In closing, I see a bright future. It takes a lot of work to move a community forward. We have specific challenges, all of, we're all America has specific challenges. The good news is that we have a fantastic group of people that are working to make this place a better place, just in, not just the city government, but in many organizations. Look at the drop of crime in the community. What a fan, that's fantastic news. Can you believe how upset we would be if we had a tremendous increase in crime? We're, we have a lot of people to thank for that, the Police Department, Chief Kepke, Mr. Radcliffe, as well as Judge Luthold, you know, who has made all the difference. We have fantastic local organizations preparing our citizens to be responsible. I spoke to Goodwill Students today, just one of many organizations that are working with young kids in the school system too. Crawford Works, Crawford Park, they're all invaluable. We couldn't do it without them. Mr. Kim, a lot I want to thank in particular for all he does. We have tremendous churches and organizations. Many of you are involved in some of those churches and organizations, and I thank you for what you've done for the city. One more thing I want to, organization I want to mention, which I'm on the board of, is the Crawford County Land Bank. It's allowed us to acquire properties through funds of a grant that some of the Daryl properties that we had in town have been there for years, and we've been able to tear, but we're going to have more on the, more on the agenda as soon as the weather breaks. There's more coming, and we're going to apply for an additional grant money for 2018. Finally, a personal note, I work with a great staff. They make my job a lot easier. Mr. Wagner is Service Director with many, many special talents. We make sure, we need to make sure that he stays and employs. Kelly Patterson brings enthusiasm and also keeps us focused and organized. John Rostash, who I mentioned earlier, I went to the Tree Academy, Land and Hill, that's exceptional people, all through City Hall you have in every department. Elected officials, Mr. Radcliffe, Ms. Love, Ms. Schiffer, and the council that's here tonight, I think it's one of the best councils, you've got the potential to be one of the best councils that has served the city. Thanks for serving. If you don't say that enough, I know you get the complaints, you don't get thanks enough, but that goes with it. I love your enthusiasm, and the only thing I say, let's, let's dream big. We don't have to agree on everything, you know, we don't agree on everything, and we don't take it personally. Let's, let's come to the best solution for the city and look forward. I need to thank my wife. Last year, we were, last year, we had celebrated our 40th wedding anniversary, and she's a very patient person, with a lot of early mornings and a lot of late nights. And we have a lot to be thankful for, living in this community, it's a great community. I've lived a lot of other places, I grew up here, and I'm blessed to be back and to be in this position. God bless this community, and we're some very, very good people, and we're laying the groundwork for the next 200 years as we come up to celebrate our last 200 years. We're going to have to celebrate our last 200, but we're looking ahead. Just pray that God continues to bless us all, organizations, elected officials, residents, city staff, everybody, we want to make this community the best it can be. Thank you, Madam President, that's the state of the city for 2018.
Thank you very much.
Condescension.
Condescension, yeah, glad I insisted. We have, do have two referrals from there. The first referral was for the grant for the bike path out off of Southern Avenue to the Friendship Bridge. We'd like to place that into Finance Committee. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Okay, Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Myers, to place the bike path in Finance Committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
Motion.
No? One no. Motion passed. And the second item was the, the tree program funding needs to go into Finance Committee. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Motion by Mr. Myers, second by Mr. Shaw, to place the tree program in the Finance Committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Motion passed, one no. Okay. Moving on, anyone else who would like to address council this evening? State your name and address, please.
This evening, I'm Joe Graham, B59 South Spring Street.
Carolyn Chiron, 1065 East Hill Avenue.
And we have before us the letter that we will be sending out, a fundraising letter to our partners for Red, White, and Blues 2018. I'll go ahead and read that now for, for viewers at home. Dear community partner, save the date July 3rd, 2018. Positive Seekers will be holding our fourth annual Red, White, and Blues celebration from 1:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. This year, we're planning a bigger, better event with more music, more fun, and it's all going to end with fireworks. We partnered with the Kiwanis to move Red, White, and Blues to the Crawford County Fairgrounds. This presents us with new challenges and new opportunities. In the past, we've used Almelo Park. At Almelo Park, we've offered six hours of quality live music, free funding for kids and families, including a bounce house and dunk tank. Performers and personalities, concessions and vendors showcasing a variety of foods and quality crafts. We have served several thousand citizens over the past three events. This year, at the fairgrounds, we believe we will easily serve as many citizens as our three previous events combined. With this in mind, we look to offer eight hours of quality live music from 1:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. with grandstand seating, expanded family entertainment, including quality games and attractions like a petting zoo and a pony ride, expanded concessions, including new foods and new vendors, and a sales jamboree, activities to captivate and capture a large crowd of people right up until the annual Kiwanis fireworks display. We want to get people in early and hold them right up until the Kiwanis fireworks show. Obviously, with this move, our costs are risen. The fairground ramp for the day will be generously covered by the Kiwanis, however, our musical acts this year will be paid. In addition to our new full bounce house and dunk tank, pettings and pony ride will cost money. We have higher insurance costs. In the past, you've stepped forward and helped us generously. We thank you from the bottom of our hearts for your previous help. This year, we've stepped up our game. We're asking even one of our valued partners to help us meet our heightened goals. We are seeking to raise, number 10,000 dollars, nearly three times our previous budget. We will use this money to provide Crawford County's residents with a homegrown festival celebrating our nation, our rich history, and our communities. We are asking you to partner with us to help us meet our goal and firmly establish Red, White, and Blues as an annual holiday tradition for Crawford County with deepest appreciation of Positive Seekers. Then the other thing that you have is this flyer right here, this is our sponsorship flyer. We will be sending this out. The Honorable Mayor has agreed to help us again as our fundraiser in chief, who's really good at that, who's really good at phone calls, but we appreciate the help of our mayor and each of you as we move forward with this. This is something entirely new for us, it's a whole new territory. So I'd like to say one other thing too quick, and I'll hand it over to Carolyn really quick. We lost a dear friend, and we would ask the council and the people sitting here to please keep the B.B. family in your prayers. His... And also, we lost some of you who attended our previous events. One of our featured acts, Tracy Cratchit, also known as Back Daddy, passed away in the fall. So we will be, we will be holding those folks in our prayers. I'll pass it over to Carolyn really quick. Thank you.
I only have one thing to say. These little pens that were passed out to everybody, that's so you can fill out your sponsorship. No, you don't have no excuse why you couldn't do anything.
Great idea.
I know. Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And we certainly do appreciate what all you do for our community, and we'll look forward to this. It's always, you know, plenty of room out there, plenty of parking, plenty of everything for everybody to be a part of it, and...
Our bands are already confirmed.
Okay, great.
We've got Jimmy Vincent, if you've not heard from him, about him.
Can we be back to the microphone?
No, you're dying right there.
Yeah. We have him, we have Bootleg City Band. We also have a Christian band that has another band that includes kids. They get the kids up on stage, and the kids get to play the tambourines, and that's a good thing. I'm working on my craft herbs right now. I'm excited. I don't look excited, but I can really roll it in. I can't...
I think you're an exciting entertainer.
I can't even come this far yet after when we first came here.
Yes, yes.
But now we're with the Kiwanis in Doug. So thank you, and Mr. Mayor, I can't thank you enough.
Thank you, guys.
And Rob Radcliffe, you look wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, man. Just dance for the camera one more time, Joe.
Oh. Wait, right up here? Oh, great, lovely. Hey, Ucires, Red, White, and Blues, July 3rd, 2018, 1 o'clock to 9:00 p.m. at the fairgrounds, please.
Thank you.
Bye, you guys.
Anyone else to address council, please? State your name and address, please.
Kurt Frankhouser, 1675 South Sandusky Avenue. I want to thank the mayor for that really nice state-of-the-city letter, and especially the tree program, because I'm one of the people that will benefit the most from that. Given my age, I'll be able to see the canopy change potentially from any trees that are planted in the city. However, it's sad that we weren't able to be in the tree program for 2018 because of the $24,000 loss in the budget there, and I want to point out that in 2017, the city signed a contract for internet for $24,000, so it was that exact amount that we could have, we could have been in this tree program if it wasn't for the...
That versus your opinion, okay?
And I also want to say that I think we can continue in a tree program with donations from businesses. I, myself, I've talked to John Rostash about donating some money for planting some trees. I was at a tree meeting, they want to plant some trees on South Sandusky, and I inquired to him... They want to plant some trees on South Sandusky and I inquired to him about what the estimated costs for that were. And I also wanted to point out, you know, in terms of money and stuff, the ODOT facility on Irving Street, it's been touted as going to be revenue neutral. But after looking at that, and I was actually there today because I drove by, there were city workers in there. Busiris city workers that were hauling in pipe, staffing it in there. And yet, the city hasn't even entered into a lease with the state on that. So, you know, I'm kind of at a shock here. How can cities start taking possession of a property that they never entered a lease with? And while I was there, I was kind of looking and, oh my gosh, there are buildings in such bad disrepair there, unsafe structures. I mean, things that, I mean, Gordon Grove needs to be sent out there with the property maintenance code and he needs to come up with a full report on this property because some of the worst-conditioned buildings in the city limits are in that property. And for the city to say it's going to be revenue neutral, I mean, there's a fence needs to be placed around the whole property. The parking lot needs repaved. There's five acres of blacktop there. I don't think we're going to sell these other two buildings and get enough money just to bring them out to be up to the property maintenance code standards, let alone constructing another building out there. There's lead paint probably on the buildings because they're so old, potential contaminated soil from, you know, the state using it for so long with salt and trucks out there leaking oil. This all needs to be looked at before we potentially take on a liability here that's going to cost them money so much and hidden costs that we don't even see. There, I mean, if we even got the utility bills from what ODOT was paying for gas and electric to operate there compared to these other two facilities, we're thinking about moving out. Those buildings are not insulated out there. We've got two perfectly good insulated buildings we're operating out of now. So I think this is going to turn into some nightmare as far as expense is concerned. And don't reward fiscal irresponsibility. I'm asking counsel that. You know, the internet is costing the city $24,000 now. You guys were not made aware that that was going to be an expense before the administration just took it out of their way to do that. A hidden cost was there. This ODOT facility is going to be a money pit, huge money pit. So, thank you.
Anyone else to address counsel this evening? If you would please state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Ashley Johnson. I live at 354 Crest Line Road. I sent you guys a letter last year asking about the expansion of water outside the city limits. I understand you guys had a meeting tonight before this, so it sounds like maybe you guys have approved or could continue to look at it. I just want to say, please consider the Crest Line Road, US 19 area. I personally sent out some letters to my neighbors just to see if other people were interested. I do have seven or eight neighbors who are interested in having city water. So just because there's not a lot of us out there, we need the water, we want the water, we're interested in it. And I just want to say thank you for considering going outside the city limits. There are people out there that are having trouble getting wells, good wells, good water, and we are interested in buying water from the city. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll hear a report a little bit later on about what occurred at the meeting this evening.
Okay.
So we'll hear about that.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else to address counsel this evening? You got one? Okay. Communications and petitions.
We have a number of communications here. The first is dated February 39, addressed to Busiris City Council from the Traffic Commission, City Traffic Commission, here Health and Safety Committee. The City of Busiris Traffic Commission would like to request the Health and Safety Committee approve the following amendments to the Traffic Control Act. Opening the north side of the City Hall parking lot alley to allow traffic to turn left to access the business drive-through window. Excuse me. Business drive-through window. The 90-day trial ended December 7, 2017 with no issues reported. The second is the no parking on the west side of Cherry Lane from Euclid to Oakwood. The 90-day trial ended on February 9, 2018 with no issues reported. Thank you, Jeffrey L. Reiser, Traffic Commission, and that needs to be referred to the Health and Safety Committee.
Okay. I need a motion then to forward this to Health and Safety.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Myers to put the parking lot alley back here in Cherry Lane, what is it, the west side of the street, into committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Thank you.
The second letter was received via email on February 13, 2018, to City Council. Dear City Council, we sincerely want to continue our service with Wavelength. We have been with Kurt Van Khouser's company, Wavelength, for over 10 years. Kurt has provided excellent quality service for our use. He has always been available to answer questions or help with adding new equipment. You, as council members, should realize that this is a business Kurt has built from the ground up by himself with not much of any help from anyone. There should be respect for his accomplishment and that he alone with other small businesses here in Busiris contribute to our tax base. We would think, as council members, you would put the future of Busiris first, keeping reputable businesses open and running full steam ahead into our future. Your slogan should be Buy Busiris First and should be your top priority. High mis regards, Lon and Cheryl Seip, and that is 116 South Walnut Street here in Busiris. You also have three other letters in your packet. These are all from outside city limits regarding the same subject. They are from Rebecca Starnar, 1317 Clement Road, Tina Ginn, 411 Al Hall Road, and Joseph and Lindsay Lewis, 2393 County Highway 74, Memorial Ohio, which is in Marion County.
Yep.
And those are all the candidates.
Okay. Thank you. We're ready to move into our standing committee reports and Mr. Vogt...
I'm...
Oh, first, before we do that. Yes, we have the plating committee minutes from last time we held over until we could find out the exact cost for the first seven-year Phase 1 of the sewer overflow reduction project. And for the first phase, it is $7 million. Originally, it said $24 million, which was a number that was thrown around at one time as being the entire project. But what we're looking at here for this first seven-year phase is at a cost of $7 million. So we do need to accept these plating committee minutes from Thursday, January 18, as amended.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Wirebaugh to accept the Thursday, January 18 plating committee minutes as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. Thank you. Now, Mr. Vogt.
Busiris City Council Joint Regular Committees Meeting, Thursday, February 8, 2018. Members present, Mark McKeever, Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Bruce Truca, Monica Sack, myself, Doug Vogt, Andrew Shaw. First order of business was Busiris City Joint Regular Committee meetings was called to order by myself at 6:00 p.m. Number two, we had public participation. Police Chief David Kepke said the neighborhood watch's Facebook presence has been rebranded as the Busiris Neighborhood News Network with a link to the city's website. Facebook page has information about various city departments, services and activities, including parks. Council members with items to post on the page can contact zoning administrator John Rostash. Kurt Van Khouser, 1675 South Sandusky Avenue, representing Wavelength Communications, said his business would be agreeable to a five-year extension of his current contract with the city, which ends this year. Doug Wilson, 220 Home Circle, asked the council to consider adding a line item to its budget for the purpose and maintenance of U.S. flags on city property. There followed a discussion about the appropriate size for a flag on the pole of Washington Square and prices of flags. Number three, order of committee business. A Economic Development Committee called to order at 6:17 p.m. Board of Zoning Appeals Appointment and Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program ended at 6:22 p.m.
Okay. You need to go to your minutes, sir.
Number one, Board of Zoning Appeals Appointment. Council needs to appoint someone to the board to replace Ken Emerson, who has stepped down effective December 31, 2017. Vogt opened the floor to nominations. McKeever nominated Bill Stucker, 205 North Spring Street. Vogt nominated Catherine Vol, 501 Martin Avenue, and Tom Rarrett, 449 Pleasant Lane. Mayor Jeff Reiser suggested the nominees come to a future committee meeting to take questions from members in the committee agreed. The council clerk will contact the nominees to see if they're available for the February 22 joint regular committee meeting, and the matter was continued. Number two, Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program, AKA CHIP. The mayor received a letter from the Ohio Regional Development Corporation noting that it's time to apply for the program for 2018 via a partnership between Crawford County, which receives a grant, and the cities of Busiris and County. Wireball made a motion requesting legislation authorizing the mayor's into the partnership for the 2018 Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program, with a second by McKeever. Motion passed by voice vote. Vogt recessed the Economic Development Committee at 6:22 p.m.
Okay. And that was with the start at 6:17. So just so that's on the record. Any questions for Mr. Vogt regarding the meeting? Okay, moving on to the plating committee. Mr. McKeever?
Yes. Plating committee started our meeting at 6:22. Members are Monica Sack, Bruce Truca, Kevin Myers, and myself, Chair. And all of us were present. On first order of business, ODOT bridge repair. ODOT is seeking a consent resolution to repair the bridge on US 30 over the Norwalk Southern Railroad in 2023 at no cost to the city. Truca made a motion requesting a consent resolution for same with a second by Myers. Motion passed by voice vote. Number two, railroad track repair at Plymouth Street. Bruce Bramstetter of Bramstetter Carroll, Inc., briefed council on a proposal to repair the CFE railroad crossing on Plymouth Street, allowing storm sewer to be installed underneath by open cut and including paving and new sidewalks at a cost of $93,000. Service Safety Director Jeff Wacker noted that the administration has been in touch with Busiris Tire at 3282 State Route 98 about connecting the business to city sewer. Truca made a motion to request legislation authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into a contract with CFE not to exceed $102,000 for railroad crossing improvements on Plymouth Street with a second by Sack. Motion passed by voice vote. Number three, 2018 mill and pave. Bramstetter detailed the list of streets to be milled and paved this year, which are: A, East Mansfield Street from Highland to Wetstone at a cost of $88,000; East Charles from Lane to Jones Street at $90,000; C, South Walnut from Oakwood to Southern at $90,000; D, Wetstone Street from East Mansfield to Railroad Tracks at $110,000; E, Wetstone Street from Railroad Tracks to Wheeler at $102,000; F, Southeast Street from Oakwood to Southern at $72,000 for a subtotal of $552,000; G, crack in ceiling and pavement markings on Sandusky Avenue from Charles to Perry and in Washington Square of $70,000 to be bid as an alternate for a total of $621,000. The city has $600,000 budgeted for milled and paved in 2018. Southern Avenue will also be paved this year as part of the existing storm separation contract. Myers made a motion to request legislation authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and to enter into contract not to exceed $600,000 for the 2018 mill and pave project with a second by Truca. Motion passed by voice vote. Number four, McKeever recessed the plating committee at 6:48 p.m.
Questions or comments regarding the minutes?
Okay.
Yes?
I'm not sure what Mr. Wagner said, but I've talked to the people at Busiris Tire and they're more interested in water than sewer at all. I don't know what he said. Do you remember, Bruce? You brought it up.
No, they were looking to hook onto a sewer line.
Oh, okay.
They've been looking at for that many, many years already.
Because we talked, they had to have some kind of a special hump for the first vein to hook into it?
Correct. They have to have a special pump to push it into our four-inch line that's headed back towards Busiris. And that, our water, our four-inch sewer line is coming from the new water filtration plant.
Okay. Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on. Finance Committee. Miss Sack?
Finance Committee met on Thursday, February 8, at 6:48 p.m. Members present, Dan Wireball, Kevin Myers, Andrew Shaw, and Monica Sack, Chair. Number one, railroad track repair at Plymouth Street. Otter Joyce Schiffer reported that the following appropriation needs to be made for the project. A, from Unappropriated Street Construction, Maintenance and Repair Fund, $93,000 to capital outlay slash street construction, maintenance and repair slash street construction, maintenance and repair. Shaw made a motion to request legislation making appropriation with a second by Myers. Motion passed by voice vote with Wireball voting no. Number two, 2018 mill and pave. Shaw made a motion approving an expenditure not to exceed $200,000 for the 2018 mill and pave project with a second by Wireball. Motion passed by voice vote. Number three, Wetstone, East Mansfield Storm Improvement. Bruce Bramstetter of Bramstetter Carroll, Inc., detailed the project, which would include the installation of a 36-inch storm sewer pipe to better drain the southeast corner of the intersection of East Mansfield and Wetstone Street. The pipe would then empty into a concrete channel to the Sandusky River, parallel to an existing channel, alleviating flooding. Myers made a motion to request legislation to authorize the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids and enter into contract not to exceed $200,000 already budgeted for the East Mansfield and Wetstone Street Storm Improvement Project. Number four, Sack recessed Finance Committee at 7:04 p.m.
Any questions or comments regarding the Finance Committee report?
Yeah.
Yes.
Go ahead. Yeah, I'm against this $93,000 because I don't want to start. We've never fixed railroad tracks before. I don't think we should start repairing them now. So I just want to put my two cents worth in there. So...
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, moving on then. Public lands and buildings. Mr. Wirebaugh?
Oh, yeah. Public lands and buildings began at 7:04 p.m. Members present, Bruce Truca, Doug Vogt, Mark McKeever, and myself. Power space contracts. It was suggested that the ten-year contract the city entered into with Wavelength, Wavelength, Inc., on April 18, 2008, actually took effect with passage of the resolution authorizing the administration to enter into the contract, which occurred on February 9, 2008. Mayor Jeff Reiser advised against signing a five-year extension with Wavelength until the administration can research the matter further, but added that it would be open to a one-year extension. The matter was continued to allow the administration to request proposals and solicitations regarding the use of city-owned tower space. Two, Pines Reservoir. Service Safety Director Jeff Wagner and the Ohio EPA now requires the city to disconnect the raw water line to the Pines Reservoir because of sanitary issues. He suggested the time may be appropriate to revisit the future disposition of the reservoir. The Crawford Park District has expressed an interest in maintaining it as a publicly accessible site, and Attorney Pat Murphy has offered to buy the reservoir and surrounding acreage. The reservoir's dam is in need of repair, and Reiser said the city wants to avoid the expense of maintaining the area. The Park District and Murphy will be invited to speak at a future committee meeting, and McKeever suggested inviting adjoining property owners as well. Bill, I believe that should be Stucker here. 205 North Spring Street asked why the water in the reservoir is unusable. Wagner said the new water treatment plant isn't set up to date in groundwater directly. He noted the Ohio EPA also now requires the disconnection of the Nuff Reservoir. The matter was continued. Third, Water Distribution Garage. ODOT has approached the city about the... ODOT has approached the city about leasing ODOT's former facility on Irving Street for $1 a year. The site could be used, could be used to consolidate various city services to keep the move revenue neutral. The city will have to sell the water distribution building and street garage, which have been appraised for a total of $1 million. In June 2017, council approved the administration's pursuit of the proposal. By way of an update, Reiser said the administration has approved the initial lease with ODOT, which will be brought before council soon. He said the water building will be sold first, followed by the street garage. ODOT will work with the city on cleaning up the Irving Street site, though cost of cleanup has not yet been determined. Wireball recessed the Public Lands and Buildings Committee at 7:44 PM.
Questions or comments regarding the Public Lands and Buildings Committee minutes? Not at this time, there's space later for any, I want to address council. Uh, we do want to finish this out then, Mr. Wireball?
Sure. Public participation was none, and Wireball asked for motion to adjourn, join the Joint Regular Committees, motion by McKeever and second by Myers to join, adjourn at 7:45 PM, motion passed.
Okay, thank you very much. Now, we had some special meetings for the Service Committee on Friday, February the 9th at 1:00 PM, Tuesday, February the 13th at 1:00 PM, and Friday, February the 16th at 10:00 AM, and tonight, Tuesday, February the 20th at 6:00 PM. Mr. Truca, let's start with the first one from February the 9th, 2018, the minutes, please.
Okay, February 9th, 2018, the meeting was called to order by myself at 1:00 PM. Members present were Dan Wireball, Doug Foote, Andrew Schock, and myself. Number one, the Special Service Committee was called by Mayor Jeff Reiser to discuss water line expansion, and the meeting was called to order by myself at 1:00 PM. Water line expansion. Mayor Jeff Reiser said the administration would like to expand the city's water lines to residents outside the city limits. He said the city could ultimately see up to a $700,000 in annual revenue generated from the new water customers. Several, several years after making the initial infrastructure investment, the expansion could take place in phases, focusing on various areas in Crawford County. The administration is proposing an increase in its city's tap fee to $1,700 and a three-year fixed introductory rate of .0149 cents per gallon. The tap-in fee would require a $500 deposit, followed by monthly payments. The expansion would be handled with six-inch water lines, not large enough for fire protection. The committee requested time to consider the proposal and scheduled a Special Service Committee meeting for Tuesday, February 13th at 1:00 PM, and a meeting on Friday, February 16th at 10:00 AM to discuss the matter for, Truca adjourned the meeting at 2:10 PM.
Any questions or comments regarding this first minute meeting? Okay, moving on to the next one for February the 13th.
Okay, uh, members present at that February 13th meeting at 1:00 PM was Dan Wireball, Doug Foote, Andrew Schock, and myself. The Special Service Meeting was called by Chair Bruce Truca and committee members Dan Wireball, Doug Foote, and Andrew Schock to discuss water line expansion. The meeting was called to order by myself at 1:00 PM. Water line expansion, the committee met with Linda Keever and Associates who detailed the city's proposal to extend water lines to customers outside city limits. He said the city risks getting boxed in as Northern Rural Water is actively soliciting interest in the Sulphur Springs area, while Delta Water is making inroads in the southern Crawford County. He said the city needs to send out mailings to determine which residents surrounding Ussires have most interest in tapping city water. He added that the water wells are failing just southeast of town. He said Nevada can also be a priority. Water Distribution Garage Team Leader John Ernsberger detailed the cost homeowners typically entail tapping into a water line and noted that the city is currently losing money on its tap fees. The matter was continued with another Special Service Committee meeting on the matter scheduled for February 17th at 10:00 AM. Truca adjourned the meeting at 2:24 PM.
That was for February the 16th, not the 17th? Hopefully it says the 16th on yours, last line?
It does.
It does, okay. Any questions or comments regarding these minutes? Okay, moving on to the report from the February 16th meeting.
Okay, February 16th meeting was at 10:00 AM. Members present were Doug Foote, Andrew Schock, and myself. The Special Service Committee was called by Chairman Bruce Truca and committee members Dan Wireball, Doug Foote, and Andrew Schock to discuss water line expansion. The meeting was called to order by myself at 10:01 AM. Water line expansion, Sean Tappel and Brian Pooter of Northern Ohio Rural Waters said their company has received expressions of interest in tapping into their water lines from 30 people in the Sulphur Springs area, and they have plans to expand their lines into Liberty Township. Mayor Jeff Reiser said the administration hopes it can offer water rates that are competitive in that area. Water Distribution Garage Team Leader John Ernsberger explained the procedures of tapping into a 12-inch water line and detailed the cost homeowners would incur. Service Safety Director distributed a letter the administration wants to send to prospective water customers outside the city limits. Committee members suggested a tap-in down payment of $750, be mentioned in the letter with the incentive extending to a date to be determined with the inclusion of average costs for which homeowners would be responsible. Schock made a motion to approve the letter with the suggested changes with a second by vote. Motion passed by voice vote. Wesley Johnson, 3540 Crestline Road, said she had sent letters to her neighbors asking if they were interested in tapping into city waters, and that several said they were. The matter was continued. Truca adjourned the meeting at 10:37 AM. And then we had another meeting, a Special Service meeting tonight, and it was, members present were Dan Wireball, Doug Foote, Andrew Schock, and myself, and the meeting was called to order at 6:00 PM. The Special Service Committee was called by Mayor Jeff Reiser to discuss water line expansion. Water line expansion, uh, we had discussed, uh, number one, the first order of business we discussed was an information letter that would be, uh, sent out to the residents outside the city limits as a way of, of a means to, uh, let the citizens outside the city know what the city has to offer, uh, for, uh, tap fees and, uh, what kind of money that would be involved, and there's, it's an incentive package for the citizens outside the city limits to, uh, sign on for city water, and so I had asked for a motion to approve this information letter so the administration can send it out to the customers to get a feedback of who would be interested in city water, and Doug Foote moved to, to go ahead and approve this information letter to be sent out, and seconded by Dan Wireball, and motion approved by voice vote. Uh, the second one was a, a contract with McKeever and Associates, and, uh, what that is, is to allow, uh, the city administration to enter into a contract with McKeever and Associates, uh, so that we can get, uh, some of the preliminary engineering, um, work done for water line expansion around the outside edges of the city of Ussires and, and into the rural areas, and, uh, uh, I had asked for a motion and, uh, Doug Foote, uh, had, uh, contracted to enter into a contract with, uh, McKeever and Associates. Doug Foote moved to, uh, enter, allow the, the administration to enter into a contract with McKeever and Associates, and the second was by, uh, Dan Wireball, and, uh, motion passed, all in favor, and the third, uh...
Mr. Chairman, I think you got those turned around.
Yeah, contract, uh, was...
Was Mr. Wireball and Mr. Schock?
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
As mentioned, it was by whom and who?
Mr. Wireball and seconded by Mr. Schock.
Okay, and, but it was the unanimous vote, everyone voted. Thank you. Um, and then the third, the third matter was the EPA contract. What this is, is this a letter of intention, uh, to the EPA, letting the EPA know that, uh, that we're seriously, uh, want to be able to sell water to the rural areas, and, uh, this is a, a matter of, uh, helping get the ball rolling, and this one, I have it written down, as Doug Foote made the motion to enter into the EPA contract, and it was seconded by Andrew Schock, and, uh, motion passed unanimously, going ahead, and, uh, and I want to head and adjourn the meeting at 6:41 PM.
Thank you. Uh, any questions or comments regarding that report? Okay, moving on to Finance Committee, we have a Special Finance Committee, Ms. Sack?
Special Finance Committee, um, started at 6:42 PM. Members present were Dan Wireball, Kevin Myers, Andrew Schock, and myself. The Special Finance Committee meeting was called by Mayor Jeff Reiser to discuss water line expansion. The meeting was called to order by myself at 6:42 PM. Number two, water line expansion. This topic was also discussed previously in the Service Committee. This will be create a plan for expansion and construction for the city of Ussires water service to rural and underserved areas at a cost map to exceed $66,000 with McKeever Associates, and also to apply to Ohio EPA for a permit. Kevin Myers made a motion with Andrew Schock seconded, all in favor, motion passed by voice vote. Monica adjourned the meeting at 6:45 PM.
Thank you. Any questions or comments regarding the Fin, Special Finance Committee minutes? None? Okay, moving on, Traffic Commission. Mayor Reiser, the Traffic Commission minutes from October the 25th, 2017?
Yes, Madam President. Traffic Commission met Wednesday, October 25th, 2017 at 1:00 PM. President were myself, Mr. Wagner, Service Director, Chief Kepke, was represented by Greg Stevens and Active Fire Chief Chad Schwumley. Chad Schwumley made a motion, seconded by Mr. Wagner, approved ministry August 29th, 2017 Traffic Commission meeting, motion passed. First order of business, ODOT traffic study referred to council. ODOT would like to perform a traffic study of Ussires, city of Ussires, no charge to city. Their recommendations are not mandatory, but would be suggested to adopt. Greg Stevens made a motion, seconded by Wagner, to refer the item to council or passage of legislations to allow ODOT to perform the study. Motion passed. A letter of referral will be sent to council. Number two, Marion Road, installation of no Jake Brake sign. A resident of the south end of town asked the Traffic Commission to look into the area at the south end of town that is across the water distribution route, because semi-trucks are causing a lot of vibration in their home. Jeff Dunn will observe the payment for any, any issue, payment for any issues, and Stevens suggested that a noise ordinance may be the most enforceable citation items tabled. Number three, cross-street visibility. Several residents asked the Traffic Commission to look into the cross-street intersection for visibility issues. The commission decided that there are plenty of yield signs in place, and the drivers just need to follow the law. Wagner made a motion, seconded by Schwumley, to leave the yield sign in place. Motion passed. Number four, Irving Street stop signs. A resident suggested adding stop signs on Irving Street because of the recent accident. Commission decided no extra sign is needed. Number five, Woodlong curb painting. Highland, Jones, and Wiley Streets are in need of curb painting up south, bound traffic to see out onto Woodlong. Dunn will have the curbs painted. Number six, alley between Southern and John needs repaired. Dunn said that the garbage trucks are causing damage to the road. Dunn will have the area repaired. Number seven, new business. Council President Sislove asked when the dirt will be filled in around Dr. Scout's office on Southern Avenue. Wagner said the contractor is working on getting all areas filled in. Old business, 200 block of East Reseller Street parking markings. The commission discussed shortly the yellow line or moving last spot, but decided to leave the parking spaces as they are already. We also talked about Prospect Street speeding. Stevens will have the speed wagon put on Prospect Street. Commission advised the residents to copy down license plates, numbers of the vehicles that are speeding. Cherry Lane, Mayor Reiser suggested, said that a resident brought Cherry Lane having parking issues again. Wagner made a motion, seconded by Schwumley, to have a 90-day trial for no parking on the west side of Cherry Lane from Euclid to Oakwood. Motion passed. Uh, 90 days approximately ended July 25th, 2018. Schwumley made a motion, seconded by Wagner, during 1:36. Motion passed.
Any traffic questions for the mayor?
I do.
Yes, Mr. Foote?
Um, the Prospect Street speeding thing, also Stevens does a write-down license plate numbers, but I guess what, what good will that do?
Uh, they, we had a conversation with whoever's speeding down there.
They're just gonna deny it. They're just gonna deny it.
Of course they are. But they're also going to be put on records that we know.
That's a topic that hits close to home with me, because I swear that from Spring Street to Taylor Avenue on West Oakwood, it's like, it's a quarter mile, and we see if we can get there into the stop sign the fastest, so.
Yeah, people can slow down.
Well, it's, it's, the issue is, you know, we have a certain amount of officers, uh, and I know, I live on the, on the street slash Irving straightaway, especially in the summertime, you know, where the motorcycles go so loud, because, you know, it's just, we just don't have, we can't afford to sit somebody in a position due to a budget constraint, so, and hopefully we catch it on the way. So, our officers will work for you.
Mr. McKeever?
I brought this up last year at the corner of Cedar Street and West Mary. Okay, that tree in the southwest corner. Of course, the leaves are off of the growth that's grown on it, and I know once the leaves grow back, people are not going to see to the west, because they're heading north on Cedar Street.
Which is a perfect segue into the tree budgets. Thank you for bringing that up.
I'm just bringing that to...
We have money to do, we could, we could take care of that in no time at all. And that's the issue, we have no money to, you know.
And one other, I did all, I keep getting pounded at work. They kind of harassed me about the sign on Rensselaer and Spring Street.
Rensselaer and Spring, okay.
It's, Rensselaer's incorrectly. I'm just saying, they're...
Okay, how do you spell Rensselaer? See how quick?
One S, R, T, N, two S.
Two S.
B, L, A, A.
Okay, I don't know, I'd say A. How do you spell the right?
Yeah.
By the writings and the, of the actual name.
I thought Mr. Dunn was gonna look into that. We'll have to find out about that.
I'm just saying, I've been pounded a little bit, and he doesn't care, because he has an easy last name.
Yeah. Mr. Truca?
Um, I didn't realize that it was, it was brought up just prior to our city council meeting, and I guess I would like to, uh, learn more about it. Uh, I had the understanding, someone was just talking, one of the council people, I was talking before the meeting started, something about Spring Street and...
And West Mansfield Street.
Yes.
And Poplar.
And I was gonna bring that up, so I'm glad, thanks for bringing it up. Um, Traffic Commission voted a 90-day trial to make, um, Spring, Mansfield, Poplar, Mansfield, and Mary and, uh, Poplar Street as four-way stops. Take the lights out, the lights will remain there for 90 days, and then again, they may remain there after, to, with all sides of flash red. So, we're gonna be, we're getting, we're gonna get ready to do that. Everyone's been, we made, uh, public notice on that, we notified everyone, school systems, um, and, uh, there were no objections to it. Uh, yeah, we think it's gonna be fine. We have, uh, the only issue we have, we keep, as you're heading, um, east on Mansfield and Spring, there is a turn lane there, we'll have to remove the turn lane. there is a turn lane there, we'll have to remove the turn lane. There's plenty of visibility, we don't anticipate...
Is the light gonna blink?
Lights have been...
Red.
Yeah, the lights will be red, yeah.
Hopefully they're high.
Right. And he will have to change.
Yeah, my client on Mary.
On Mary.
Their turn lane will change. Wherever there's a turn lane will change, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions regarding Traffic Commission report? Okay, I need a motion then to accept the committee minutes and related committee reports collectively.
Second?
Motion by Mr. McKeever, seconded by Mr. Vogt, to accept the committee minutes and related committee reports collectively. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. We have a report of city officers. Mayor, you've said enough tonight?
Do you want me to read some, like, specifics?
No.
I can do that again.
But you can maybe handle some questions if anyone has any questions.
Yeah, we have any questions.
Does anybody have any specific questions for the mayor this evening? You've exhausted it? Okay, 90. Service Director is not with us and did not send a report. Law Director, Mr. Ratliff?
What can I say to this?
I don't know.
I don't really have a report on it, but if I move on. A little note though for everybody, the formerly Peach House that's now stripped down to Bearwood on Taylor Street is horrific. I understand that it is collapsing and pieces were falling all over the place. Trying to work a land bank to get that done as soon as, soon as we can. There is, it's already in the land bank, it's already in there. Already did start.
Yes, I heard about that the other day, that it's rather scary. Any other questions for the law director? Mr. Truca?
Where is that Clark Farm Station and Miss Prince?
Oh, that's a very interesting question. Leave that. Apparently, there were initially significant grant funds that were designed to cover all the remediation and the demolition and the putting it back into some, you know, usable format. We are administering that, that's going through another entity. During the remediation process, apparently they discovered other things that needed remediated. Not really privy to what that was, but it spent up all the grant money. So they are now looking to go back and try to get more grant money to finish tearing it down, chipping out all the concrete. Good sweat cake might tear it down, I'm not sure, but getting the concrete out and stuff is the bigger issue. So waiting to hear what's gonna happen there.
But on the follow-up, you mean the money wasn't eaten up by that site or it was eaten up by...
No, my understanding is it was eaten up by that site. In that when they got into doing some of the testing, they indicated that there was other, you know, other fluids and things down in the dirt. But, and I guess it makes sense because we were concerned when they're doing it, it seemed like it took them forever to go through that process. And I guess that's probably what happened at that point, so.
Okay, any other questions for the...
I guess one, I guess it's probably for both the mayor and the Service Director. We've got that list the other day of the homes that are being torn down and, and there was, the one that caught my eye was on Woodlong Street. The county would like that house that's being torn down on Woodlong Street. I would just like to know if we could discuss that before that actually happened.
Is that... The house or the lot? There's a lot that, I think there's a lot that we still own there and it's all contiguous to the ones that just recently burnt?
Oh, it could be, but I, it just had a property. I could ride by or anything.
We'll have to bring that to the Public Lands and Buildings Committee at some point in time, but yeah, my basic understanding is that that whole area where there was a couple of houses that burnt, Land Bank was interested in maybe packaging that entire, really it's almost an entire block now that's been demolished with respect to the church and some of the development there.
Woodlong?
Woodlong.
Woodlong.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Not by the fairgrounds, apparently connected to the fairgrounds and...
I don't know.
Did he spend on Woodlong?
I don't, I don't think there's one in Land Bank on Woodlong. I don't, do you count?
Yeah, I didn't go by, I just...
Okay, what can you do if you don't take, investigate and get back to us?
There was that list you just sent.
Is it on that list?
It was on that list.
Who's, you got that list?
I don't have it listed, but I thought it was the 1300 block.
So the 1300 block would be east of West Stone?
Correct.
The third block, east.
Yes.
Contained without my fairgrounds, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, that'd be out there, basically where the water tower is.
I don't know much about it. There's a, there's been a house in West Stone, not too far from there, that's gonna be currently considered.
Okay, would you get back to us with that information?
Yeah, I just wondered if we had the oppor, if that was a possibility, that we had opportunity to discuss that rather than to get to the...
If, well, if it's a word, we'll have to, I'll find out.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know any of that.
Okay, any other questions? Moving on to the auditor, Mrs. Shiffrid, the Britvic girl here has... Do you have a report?
No, I don't have a report. Well, I do have a question, it just dawned on me, I should have asked it earlier probably. On North Sandusky, we were headed south, just crossed the bridge on North Sandusky, thereby Circle K, and hit a huge hole last night that I thought knocked the front end of my car out of alignment. I just wondered if anybody had heard anything about that or patched that up?
We had two crews out today, patching.
I mean, it was, it set your teeth on edge.
It's been, it's been a rough winter. And we haven't had a large snowfall, but worse, we had a lot of one to three, four-inch snows and put a lot of salt down this year into the city streets and taken tolls.
Only one young one's in here.
If anyone sees a pothole, please call the city offices and we'll make sure we get out right away. So I'd say we had two crews out today, they advantage of good weather.
That's all I have.
Okay. I need a motion then to accept the auditor statement of cash position that is dated January the 31st, 2018, that was given to you at the last meeting.
Second?
Motion by Mr. McKeever, seconded by Mr. Truca, to accept the auditor statement of cash position dated January the 31st, 2018. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. For you, you also have the treasures report for January of 2018 that's been submitted for your review and we'll take it up at the next meeting. We have nothing from the police chief or the fire chief. I need a motion to accept the city officers' reports.
No. Second?
Motion by Mr. Vogt, seconded by Mr. Schach, to accept the city officers' reports. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion passed. This is where we have visitors' input regarding reports of standing in special committees and or city officers. Does anyone here to address council this evening? Please state your name and address.
Kurt Bankhauser, 1675 South Sandusky. I had a question for the Public Lands and Building Chair, Mr. Wireball. Reference the June 8th meeting where there was discussion and a vote on the ODOT lease. Do you remember what that exact motion was for?
Oh, the one that's mentioned, yeah, it was, yeah, just to, I must, I mean, to be honest, not exactly, but just to enter into, that was, basically, we were saying we wanted that property for a dollar a year, so...
So that's what your best remembrance of that was?
Yeah, it was June, in June 2017, I guess we just talked, right? I mean, I remember talking about it and said, yeah, we thought that was a good idea.
Well, I'll ask Monica then, because she's the one that made the motion. Monica, do you remember what your motion was for?
Exactly what Angela said.
Okay, well, I, I watched the video of that meeting and Monica said, quote, "I'm okay with moving forward and seeing what we can get." And then Mr. Wireball, you said, "So is that a motion to move forward with this and let administration further look at this?" Question mark. And then Monica said, "Yes." So I, I then compared that with what the minutes actually read from that meeting. And the minutes read, Reacher said council's okay is being sought before the administration moves forward with the proposal. SAC made a motion allowing the administration to go forward with its approval, with the seconded by McKeever, motion passed. After watching the videos, clear to me that council only gave the administration permission to look into more detail of the idea, not actually executing a lease and moving into the Irving Street.
I don't believe we have yet. Have we entered a lease with them yet?
We've actually looked into the idea, just as you were just saying, we're looking into the idea.
But it never got prung back with council and said, hey, we're gonna...
When we're ready, we'll come back to council. We're not ready yet.
That's still on the open, I know that's still on the open projects here, so.
But at the last committee meeting, Public Lands and Building, the mayor said that they've been sending back and forth a lease with ODOT.
Were you signed their lease?
Well, you didn't sign one, but are you sending like a draft copy to them or...
They, they sent a draft copy to us. We haven't, we haven't signed that draft copy.
But how do you know if you're gonna, you said at that meeting, you said we're gonna have it real soon for council to sign, here real soon. But you haven't even discussed exactly what your plans are inside the fence in there. So why would you want to enter into a lease without, you know, talking about, you know, what's our plans here? How much is all these things gonna cost?
You know, we, we are working on a plan. Before we come back with a lease that's been signed, we will come back with a plan. We won't just say, "Sign this lease." You know, so we'll, we'll, we'll do it right.
Did the administration, did the administration tell Water Department employees to start moving stuff into that property?
We're, we have, they allowed us to move some stuff to store it there. They gave us permission to do that. That's got nothing to do with whether we sign or lease it up.
I think, I think...
Mr. Wireball?
Yes, I think where you're maybe getting confused is typically where the administration, they work all the bugs out, they bring it back to us. They say, "Here's the lease, here's it, council, will you approve it?" "Yes, we'll approve it," and then it goes in the law. We have, we don't, we don't mess around with who's moving what here and who's doing that, when we're gonna move in, how many buildings are coming down. That's an administrative job. And we let them do their job and they bring the stuff to us and then we do our job. We say yes or no. And if they don't have enough information, we've done it before, we throw it back in their lap and say, you know, "Bring us more information," so...
Well, I understand that. My, my point was that the minutes are incorrectly construing because of how vague they were, that something happened and was agreed upon that really wasn't, so that's really all.
I don't think, I mean, I didn't see the video, but I don't think that is. We said, "Go ahead and continue to look at it," you know.
Mr. McKeever?
Explore the possibilities.
Mr. McKeever?
On our open project list, it states, "ODOT has referred to, offered to lease its former facility for a dollar a year." Council, city could consolidate various services there, but would have to sell water, distribution building, street garage to make move revenue, revenue neutral. Motion passed, allowing administration to go forward with its approval, which means they're going to investigate to get cost and how much it's gonna be and if it's gonna be cost effective for us. That's what it was. It's not been decided, they have not entered into agreement because we never voted on it yet. In committee, let alone council. But you would want to see all the associated costs before an agreement?
Of course, we have to see. We can't approve it without knowing what the cost is.
And they, you know, the administration doesn't want to go out and do all this work and us, and you know, and then bring it back to us and say, "We don't want to do anything like that," you know? So it's just, it's communication and that's what we're doing. We're just communicating. So, I mean, I don't see no steam.
I mean, I, I just don't want to see hidden costs that we don't know.
There are no hidden costs. We made it very clear in that meeting that, that's great, take that, take that garage, move in there, but as long as it doesn't cost us anything. And I think the mayor was on the same, same page, you know? We can do it without it costing us. And maybe one department will move there this year and maybe it'll be two years before the next department moves in.
Has the city ever done anything that they thought was gonna cost a certain amount and then after they started doing it, it ended up costing more?
Every day. It's the way it works. Have you ever done that? Same way at home. Have you ever done that? Put a fence up or something and decide, oh, I need to put concrete.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else to address council this evening? Okay, moving on for consideration of proposed legislation for the first time.
We have a new legislation, ordinance number three, 2018, amending and supplementing ordinance number 57, 2017, meaning the annual appropriations ordinance for 2018 by appropriating from unappropriated street construction maintenance and repair funds, be a sum of $93,000 to the capital outlay items within the street construction maintenance and repair category, within the street construction maintenance and repair subparagraph, and declaring an emergency, that is referred to finance. Resolution number two of seven, 2018, authorizing and directing the mayor of the city of Bucyrus, Ohio, in behalf of said city, to enter into a partnership agreement with Propper County and City of Galleen for the application and administration of the PY 2018 Community Housing and Impact and Prevention Program, or CHIP, and declaring an emergency, that is referred to economic development. Resolution number two oh eight, 2018, authorizing and directing the Bucyrus Public Service Safety Director in behalf of the city of Bucyrus, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into contractor contracts not to exceed $600,000 with the lowest and best bidder or bidders in connection with the furnishing of the necessary labor materials and equipment to improve the portions of the streets and alleys identified on the attached Exhibit A referred to as 2018 million paid program. And to the extent that appropriate funds permit, such are the portions of streets and alleys for which the city of Bucyrus is responsible for maintenance or implementation, as council may specifically approve, finally authorizing and directing the Bucyrus City Auditor to draw a warrant or warrants in payment therefore from the appropriate appropriation or appropriations and declaring an emergency, that is referred to the plating committee. Resolution number two oh nine, 2018, the following resolution enacted by the city of Bucyrus of Propper County, Ohio, here and after referred to as a city, in the matter of the stated described project and declaring an emergency, I'll read the first three sections, be resolved by the council of the city of Bucyrus, State of Ohio, two-thirds of all members elected there to concur in section one, project description, PID number 105571, whereas the state has identified the need for the described project to perform bridge repairs on US Route 30 at SLN 08.42 Eleanor over the north southern railroad in the city of Bucyrus in Propper County. This project is currently scheduled to be constructed in the summer of 2023. Now therefore be obtained by the city of Bucyrus in Propper County, Ohio, section two, consent statement, meaning in public interest, the city gives consent to the director of transportation to complete the above described project. Section three, cooperation statement, the city shall cooperate with the director of transportation in the above described project as follows. One, the city gives consent for the above improvement. Two, no funds are required from the city except that the city agrees to assume and bear 100% of the total cost per attic construction items requested by the city and not necessary further improvement as determined by the state and federal highway administration, that is referred to the plating committee. Resolution number two ten, 2018, authorizing and directing the Service Safety Director in behalf of the city of Bucyrus, Ohio, to advertise for bids and enter into contractor contracts not to exceed the already budgeted $200,000 with the lowest and best bidder or bidders for the east Mansfield Street and West Stone Street, storm improvement, and finally authorizing and directing the Bucyrus City Auditor to draw, to draw a warrant or warrants in payment therefore from the appropriate appropriation or appropriations and declaring an emergency, that is referred to finance. Resolution number two eleven, 2018, authorizing and directing the Public Service Safety Director in behalf of the city of Bucyrus, Ohio, to enter into a contract with CFE Railroad not to exceed $100,000 to $2,000 for railroad crossing improvements on Plymouth Street and... Street, and finally authorizing and directing the Bucyrus Auditor to draw warrant or warrants in payment therefore from the appropriate appropriation or appropriations and declaring an emergency, that is referred to the plating committee. Resolution number two twelve, 2018, authorizing and directing the service safety director of the city of Bucyrus, Ohio, to apply to the director of the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency pursuant to Ohio revised code section six one, six one zero, six one zero nine point zero seven for approval to construct the necessary infrastructure and expand service and delivery of city of Bucyrus water service to all available areas, that is referred to the service committee, and finally resolution number two thirteen, 2018, authorizing and directing the public service safety director on behalf of the city of Bucyrus, Ohio, to enter into an agreement with McKeever and Associates, Inc., to create a plan for expansion and construction of infrastructure for city of Bucyrus water service to rural and underserved areas that costs not to exceed sixty-six thousand dollars for purpose of applying to the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency for a permit to expand water service pursuant to Ohio revised code section six one zero nine point zero seven. Further authorizing and directing the Bucyrus City Auditor to issue a warrant or warrants from the appropriate appropriation or appropriations in payment for said services and declaring an emergency, that is referred to the city service.
Okay. We go through all of those. I need a motion to, I need a motion to accept this as the first reading.
So moved.
Sorry. Motion by Mr. Fote, second by Mr. Truca, to accept this as the first reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion passed. The ordinance number three dash twenty eighteen is referred back to finance committee. Resolution number two oh seven dash twenty eighteen is referred back to economic development. Resolution two oh eight dash twenty eighteen is referred back to plating. Resolution two oh nine, twenty eighteen is referred to plating. Resolution number two ten dash twenty eighteen is referred back to finance. Resolution two eleven dash twenty eighteen is referred to plating committee. Resolution number two twelve dash twenty eighteen is referred back to service, and resolution two thirteen dash twenty eighteen is referred back to service. This is time where we have public participation. Any member of the general public may present their input or comments on legislation that has been read for the first time. None? Okay. Do you want to take a recess or not, or you want to get it over with?
Just go.
Let's go? Okay. Committee reports on pending legislation. Finance committee.
Finance is favorable to ordinance three dash two thousand and eighteen, the Plymouth Street Railroad Crossing Appropriation, and finance is favorable to resolution two ten dash two thousand and eighteen, the East Mansfield Wetstone Storm Improvement.
Okay. Economic Development.
Economic Development Committee is favorable to resolution two oh seven dash twenty eighteen, CHIP grants with Crawford County.
Yeah. Plating.
Plating committee is resolution twenty eighteen, two oh eight, twenty eighteen, twenty eighteen million paid is favorable. Resolution two oh nine, twenty eighteen, the ODOT Route Thirty Bridge Repair for 2023, plating is favored. And resolution two eleven, twenty eighteen, the Plymouth Street Railroad Crossing Contract, plating committee is favorable.
Service committee.
Service is favorable to resolution two twelve dash two thousand and eighteen. It's for the, says water line distribution permit for running over Ohio EPA, and it's also favorable to resolution two thirteen dash two thousand and eighteen, and it's engineering contract with the P.U.R.E. and Associates for rural water line expansion.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion to accept these reports.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Myers, to accept the reports on legislation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Here we are. For the second, the second and third reading of proposed ordinance number three dash twenty eighteen, which is the Plymouth Street Railroad Crossing Appropriation, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved. Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Fote?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
No.
Truca?
Yes.
SAC?
Yes.
The ordinance number three, twenty eighteen. Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number three dash twenty eighteen?
So moved. Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
No.
Truca?
Yes.
SAC?
Yes.
Fote?
Yes.
Ordinance number three dash twenty eighteen is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed resolution number two oh seven dash twenty eighteen, which is the CHIP grants with the Crawford County and Galleon, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved. Second.
Shaw?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
SAC?
Yes.
Fote?
Yes.
And I was the one that made the motion.
Okay, very good. Resolution two oh seven, twenty eighteen. Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution two oh seven dash twenty eighteen?
So moved. Second.
Wireball?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
SAC?
Yes.
Fote?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Resolution two oh seven dash twenty eighteen is duly adopted. For the second and third readings, a proposed resolution number two oh eight dash twenty eighteen, which is the twenty eighteen million paved project, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved. Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
SAC?
Yes.
Fote?
Yes.
Resolution number two oh eight, twenty eighteen. Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution two oh eight dash twenty eighteen?
So moved.
Fote?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
SAC?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Resolution two oh eight dash twenty eighteen is duly adopted. For the second and third readings of resolution number, proposed resolution number two oh nine dash twenty eighteen, which is the ODOT Route Thirty Bridge Repair for two thousand and twenty-three, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
SAC?
Yes.
Fote?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Resolution number two oh nine, twenty eighteen. Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution two oh nine dash twenty eighteen?
So moved. Second.
Wireball?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
SAC?
Yes.
Fote?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Resolution number two oh nine dash twenty eighteen is duly adopted. For the second and third readings, a proposed resolution number two ten dash twenty eighteen, which is the East Mansfield Street slash Wetstone Storm Improvement bid, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved. Second.
Fote?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
SAC?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Resolution number two ten, twenty eighteen. Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution two ten dash twenty eighteen?
So moved. Second.
Wireball?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
SAC?
Yes.
Fote?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Resolution number two ten dash twenty eighteen is duly adopted. For the second and third reading of proposed resolution two eleven dash twenty eighteen, which is Plymouth Road Railroad Crossing Contract, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved. Second.
Is that McKeever? McKeever?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
No.
Truca?
Yes.
SAC?
Yes.
Fote?
Yes.
Resolution number two eleven, twenty eighteen. Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution two eleven dash twenty eighteen?
So moved. Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
No.
Truca?
Yes.
SAC?
Yes.
Fote?
Yes.
Resolution number two eleven dash twenty eighteen is duly adopted. For the second and third readings, a proposed resolution number two twelve dash twenty eighteen, which is the water line distribution permit from the Ohio EPA, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
Fote?
Yes.
SAC?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Resolution number two twelve, twenty eighteen. Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution two twelve dash twenty eighteen?
So moved. Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
SAC?
Yes.
Fote?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Resolution number two twelve dash twenty eighteen is duly adopted. For the second and third readings of proposed resolution number two thirteen dash twenty eighteen, which is the water line distribution engineering contract, do I hear a motion to suspend the rules, waive the reading of the caption and text, and declare it an emergency?
So moved.
Second.
SAC?
Yes.
Fote?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
McKeever?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
Resolution number two thirteen, twenty eighteen. Do I hear a motion to adopt proposed resolution two thirteen dash twenty eighteen?
So moved. Second.
McKeever?
Yes.
Fote?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Wireball?
Yes.
Truca?
Yes.
SAC?
Yes.
Resolution number two thirteen dash twenty eighteen is duly adopted. Thank you very much. That was a lot of work out of the law director's office and everybody to get all that legislation together. Not easy. Under old business, does anyone have anything they would like to bring up this evening? None? Okay. New miscellaneous business, Thursday, this Thursday, February the twenty-second, is the Chamber of Commerce twenty eighteen Business and Industry Forecast Breakfast from seven thirty a.m. to nine a.m. at the Trillium Event Center. Twenty-dollar registration is required. You can contact the council clerk if you need a reservation. Friday, February the twenty-third, twenty eighteen, a Records Commission meeting is at ten thirty a.m. On Monday, February the twenty-sixth, material bids opening is at ten a.m. On Tuesday, February the twenty-seventh, the Board of Building Standards and Appeals will be meeting at four p.m. Anyone else with newer miscellaneous business they'd like to bring up this evening?
Hi. It's not new, but I'd like to discuss the parking lots in our committee meetings, the city parking lots.
City parking lots? Do you want to put that into committee then into...
Yeah, I think it is.
It's open.
It's in committee, but it's one...
It's in committee. Okay, we'll add that to the agenda then. Okay, we've got that. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, we are all here this evening. The joint regular committee meetings are referrals from this council meeting and any open project listed, which may be discussed during the committee meetings. Those referrals are...
We have three new referrals. We have the true suggested traffic control map changes from the Traffic Commission Health and Safety. We have the bike path grant funds from the mayor to the finance committee. We have the tree program funds from the mayor to the finance committee. In existing committee and on the agenda at present for Thursday's meeting, the Bucyrus Tourism and Visitors Bureau is in economic development. The tower space contracts, that's in Public Lands and Buildings. The ambulance service is in health and safety. The BZA appointment is in economic development, and the city parking lots in Public Lands and Buildings. So that's where we stand. That's all.
Okay. Before we, just before, I'll call on you in just a moment. But something that we don't want to let go past us here is that our sympathy to those officers from Westerville, that was certainly a huge loss to that community, and big kudos to, we had two police vehicles with officers in it, attended the ceremony on Friday. I think the police chief said that they were an hour and forty-five minute into that procession is where their place was. And I noticed there were so many other communities were represented there. So our sympathy certainly goes out to those families. And also the, a very terrible reminder of what horrible things can happen about the the shootings down in Florida. And, uh, hopefully this is going to cause, uh, a lot of places to take different looks at how, how we handle dismissal, how we handle, uh, you know, it's, it's sad to say, uh,